Test one, Orion, can you hear me?
Hi. Yes, I can hear you.
I see you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir. Hear me?
I can hear him.
You can hear him?
Frankly, it's very...
Can you...oh, is it too faint?
Try again, Orion.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Okay, now we got you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're a little ways down on the agenda, so if you wanted to just follow along, I'll call at you when we're ready.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
James.
Yes, we are ready.
I'd like to call December 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Yeah.
Tim.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Amber.
Please try to pledge. Wrong grace.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Now, I seek approval of the November 7th Committee of the Whole Minutes. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion, too.
I'll second.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yep.
Larry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Now, I welcome comments from citizens on anything not on our agenda tonight, so please feel forward to come, or feel free to come forward.
Good evening, Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. I had complained, imagine that, to ADQ about some issues driving down the road again, and I drew them up, sent them GPS coordinates, and I would like to read what the gentleman said back to me. And I complained about a vapor on Arbor Acres that was just directly across, strongly odors and vapors on Arbor Acres while driving a vehicle on public roadway, 7:40 a.m., right across from their RNG process, or reported it on, sorry, I thought I was organized, November the 17th. And they they investigated it on November the 26th. Says on November 26th, this is from Ryan Hayden, ADQ inspector, says a complaint investigation was conducted at Eco Vista Landfield and the surrounding area to include the address listed by the complaint, complainant. At the time of the investigation's start, local weather monitoring reported the wind direction of five miles per hour east-southeast with an ambient temperature of 36 degrees, no precipitation. Says no diffused or suspended substances, vapors, were observed in the air along Arbor Breakers Avenue, however, a faint smell of manure was observed at the complainant's address. Considering the wind direction, the livestock observed east of the complainant's address, Ogden Farms, were likely the source of that odor. No violations were observed at the landfill. So I reported on the 17th, they investigate on the 26th, they take pictures of my neighbor's pasture, and they say I smell manure. Well, I'm sure he probably got in his mustache, but anyway, a bunch of children, so I'm going tomorrow to visit with them, I've asked them all week, I think y'all seen the emails, asked them all week to have a visitation with his supervisor and with him. December the 29th, 2021, three years this month. When I got into it, other people have been to it long before I got into it. I just want to keep y'all updated, appreciate what you're doing, and I think they trying to keep God out of the state business. I think I need to put it back in there, put him back in there. You know, they keep saying separation of church and state, I think I need to be thinking about where they've taken us to. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we're moving on. We're going to discuss water and sewer impact fees.
I have a question first, Mayor, did you get a chance to add the two items to the agenda?
No, I did not. Do we, are we allowed to go ahead and add two items?
If it is okay with the rest of the council.
Council? One is the tank, one is the tank, I'm sorry, James, can you?
I'm sorry, the tank bid tabulation and the other item was a rezone.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yes, for the rezoning. So one of them, I did find my paper, the industrial area tank bid opening, and you guys have the information already in your packets and you should have, yes, it's already in your new packets.
It goes on Friday, in fact, the agenda looks...
Exactly, because they just came in yesterday.
Okay.
And one of them is the industrial area tank bid openings, and it should have been emailed to you, and they are in your packets tonight, and the other one is a public hearing for a rezone.
All right, Council, I guess, I guess I will go down the line and ask if you want to approve it being added to the agenda or no. Daniel?
I think you should have a motion that comes in a second, and then we vote on it from there.
I think he was trying to see what everybody thought before there was a motion made. Right, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would think we need to have a motion in a second.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion then to put these particular items on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add them to the agenda.
No second?
Okay.
Okay. No motion? I guess now we have a discussion of water and sewer impact fees.
Hello. Not much new to say, I was requested to put this back on the agenda for your reconsideration. So the only thing I added, I put on your, on your desk up there, Springdale passed a ordinance Tuesday night to increase their water rates and also add impact fees. I just made you a copy of their impact fees, just so you would have something to kind of compare to. If you look at that sheet, their, their 5/8 water meter has an impact fee of $4,712 and a wastewater impact fee of $1,154.
Mr. Clark, I don't see that, I'm so sorry, but...
It was laid on your desk.
Thank you. Could you say, could you repeat that, please?
Yes, so their 5/8 meter, which is our smallest one also, they've settled on $4,712 for water impact and $1,154 for sewer impact. And if ours is approved the way it's presented, we will be at about $2,200 for water and about 16, 17 for sewer.
Can you remind me, I don't have that report in front of me, but...
It should be in your packet, the...
No, I mean the report that we paid for from...
Oh, from Duncan.
Right. What they said should be ours for 5/8 at least?
Yeah, so the total 100% would have been about $4,400.
So in this case, at least, Springdale would still be $300 higher than our 100%.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clark, on the sewer side, what would the 100% be on ours in the Duncan study?
About $3,200.
Thank you.
What was that question?
The sewer, how much 100% would be? It's around $3,200.
Okay, thank you.
There's not any other questions, I would just ask that you send it on to Council.
So what exactly are you requesting? I understand that a year ago when we did this, the idea was that we would go from 25 to 50 to 75 to 100.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
I have made some waves and probably ruffled some feathers by consistently saying that I think it should be at 100%, but frankly, I think any move toward 100% is, is a good move, but thank you, appreciate it.
And I concur, and, and we've always very well gone along with, with suggestions from, from our planning, whatever the case may be, and in his case, public works, and so gradually is better than none at all, so. Does anybody else have any thoughts? Mike?
I just have a couple of questions. I guess most importantly for me, do these fees help with the goal, number one, that's in the memo, is to reduce the reliance of sales tax? How much can these impact fees help in that respect? Number one.
How much is, is a tough question, I mean...
It depends on how much is building's going on, obviously.
Right, exactly. And we've had them in place now for about a year, we've got roughly $150,000 in each account, you know, so...
Not chump change.
Not chump change, but it's growing fairly slow. Of course, the fear is, I mean, you raise it and then the development drops off, it's kind of a...
But we've also got, we know at least 300 more houses coming in the next...
That's correct.
Year and a half. I guess they're helpful in helping to maintain the properties that are being developed, that's basically what the fees are going to be used for, since you can't use it on what's existing already, you basically put it in the fund to help maintain the infrastructure that we have to put in to...
Yeah, not to maintain, you can't use it to maintain, you can use it to add to the infrastructure, to add new lines or replace old lines.
Right, so these new developments that come in that pay the, the impact fees, those monies are set aside to pay, say we have a water line breaks, or we need to make improvements to a lift station that may be needed, that's, those monies can be used to help finance those projects, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Let's see if I had anything else. Oh, if we're going to pass this on, I did see one thing in the public hearing notice, obviously we'll have to change the date of that, it's, it's still listed as November 19th, 2024?
I sent out a new notice for December 17th.
Okay, well, I picked up my packet on...
Okay, she, she must have used the old public notice, but there was a public hearing notice published in the newspaper for December 17th.
All right, all right, that's, that's good, thank you, appreciate it.
So to kind of piggyback off what Mr. Washcoyak brought up, the funds that you have, that you stated, you know, we have some money in, what have we used that fund, those funds for currently here in the last year?
Currently, we have not used any impact fees.
None of it?
No.
Are we saving it up or...
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, $150,000 is not chump change, but it doesn't go very far in, in water and sewer construction, so I would like to see that fund build up.
So had we implemented them at 100% and we had more than, you know, I see $150,000, I think that's what I heard, times that by four, at 100%, we'd have that, would we not?
That is correct.
So we're talking, we're talking $600,000, what could $600,000 do for us right now?
Obviously more than 150.
Right, so we've got a couple developments that are coming in front of us, we've got 612 that's coming through, I'm gonna tell you, I don't see Tawny Town not growing, I don't see developers not coming, so I think we're gonna have construction, we're gonna have movement, we've got, look at that, the big Vapor Maven building that they're building, you're gonna have new commercial in there, you've got where the Jack's Liquor used to be, right by Tire Plaza, they're supposed to build another retail shop there, you're gonna have businesses coming, you're gonna have more residents moving, citizens moving in here, hence construction. Having this impact fee at 25% and us only having $150,000 in, you know, whether it's the water or the sewer, when it could be $600,000, I think we're gonna do a disservice to the citizens by not having the recommended Duncan survey and, you know, analyst numbers that they told us to have, I think we're doing a disservice to our constituents here by not collecting the 100% impact that these houses are gonna have on us. I, I don't know how much I can keep repeating that, but, I mean, if we're talking account bank accounts that we have in front of us at 150,000, that we could have at 600,000 right now, and if we're looking ahead at what's coming our way and the developments coming to Tawny Town, we're not stopping, they're not, Bentonville's going, Rogers is going, Fayetteville's going, Gentry, Decatur, it's all going. Prosperity's coming and we're gonna have this, this growth, and so if we're scared that we're gonna run off development, when we see Springdale's water impact is at 4,700 and we're talking 4,400, sewer's a little higher, 1,100 to 3,200? I don't, it's a no-brainer to me, so that's all I gotta say.
That's certainly an option of the Council.
Mr. Burris, I believe.
Well, especially hearing what, what Mr. Washcoyak just said and then Mr. Montez's follow-up, I, I believe with those concerns that, as Danny pointed out, if there's 100% of that, I, I know, I understand one of the arguments has been that the cities around us aren't as much, that, that obviously isn't true anymore, and, and again, the impact was the impact for us. So here, I'm, I'm talking to my fellow council members here, I want to be as amenable as I can to try to get this moved in the right direction. I do believe 100% is the correct answer, and I, and I believe that for lots of reasons. I know that that report's a little bit older now, so it was right then, it's probably off now, we probably need even more. Maybe it would make people feel better if there was a, when this happens, the impact slows down or something, I, I don't know, but it sounds like, based on what you're saying, that 100% is the right answer, is that what I hear you saying, or are you just trying to get it moved forward?
Well, yeah, I mean, like you've said many times, we paid for this survey to be done, so ultimately 100% is the right answer, it's just how we get there. So ultimately, 100% is the right answer, it's just how we get there. My personal opinion was that we phase it in over time. Now, if the council doesn't want to do that, if we want to go to, straight to 100% from here, then that's what we do. My fear is always to, you know, not wanting to run off the builders. But now that other cities are jumping on board with impact fees, you know, they can't use that excuse of we'll go somewhere else and build, because not only is Springdale, or has Springdale done it, if you read in the paper this week, Centerton is looking at it. And I think every city in Northwest Arkansas will follow. We have to.
May I?
Please, Mike.
The fee grows every year based on cost of living increase per code, right?
That is correct.
There's going to be at least that percentage increase every year.
Yes.
And I know, you know, when you think about that, the impact isn't just for the immediate time when things are put in. I mean, the impact lasts for as long as the structures are there, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I understand the 100%, I do, I really do. But again, I'd like to defer to what Mr. Clark has asked for. I do get the 100%, and I understand that. And if that's what y'all want to do, I could probably support that just based on what I've heard here and what... But if he wants to phase it in, and we promised that, I think, when we passed this about a year ago, that that's what we would do. We didn't jump on 100% on it at that time, we could have. I know there was some support for it back then. So I still tend to kind of lean toward what Mr. Clark has come forward and asked us for, is to do the 50% now. And if we want to look at 75% in six months or less, I guess we can do that instead of waiting a year. Or we can, you know, we can do it, you know, in six months to go to 100, whatever. But I tend to lean towards what you've come forward with and proposed to us to just go to the 50% at this particular time.
Is that what you're asking for? Because I'm not getting that, but I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to take words out of your mouth, put them into your mouth.
Yes.
Is that what you're asking for, is 50%?
Yes, we are currently at 25. I'm asking to double that, which would be 50% of the maximum allowed.
Misty, I think you have something to say.
Yeah, Mike, I'm with you on this, I'm leaning towards this as well. That's more my comfort level because it is already going to raise with cost of living and things like that. So this would put us at the 50%. And I'm good with going back in six months and if it's looking like we need to do it sooner than a year, but I do like the idea of phasing it in as well.
In my opinion, as I've said before, I tend to go with what you gentlemen, let's make the big bucks, you know, for what you do. If your recommendation is that, that you've studied it, you're far more knowledgeable about the things like that and as, you know, phasing it in, that's why we originally, last year we started, we were going to phase in every year. So that's where I stand, I stand with the phasing it in as opposed. But it depends on what everybody else wants. I understand it is costing us 100%, I do that.
I'd say one more rebuttal to that. I mean, when we did the street, when we did the fire, the public safety impact fees, we implemented those at 100%. So I think what the order of how these things came to us, water and sewer came to us, we passed it at 25 and with the expectation of, you know, every year growing up, going up. And then when police impact fees came, we went to 100. I feel like when we did that and we had that discussion and we looked at that and analyzed that, I think we realized that phasing it in in 25 increments wasn't a good idea. So I think now would be a time to rectify that mistake and implement this at 100 rather than keep on phasing it up. I get it, yeah, something's better than nothing, but when I hear a bank account that has $150,000, could have had $600,000, and with the way I would think Pat's got our account set up, we're probably gaining interest off that and dividends. So $600,000 is going to get you more dividends than $150,000 is going to get you. And I just don't know if we're doing the right thing by doing the phasing in. So I would motion to move this to council by implementing it at 100% rather than the 50% listed here in the packet we got tonight.
One last time.
Is it fair to say that nobody wants anybody to be upset, but at the same time, there are certain needs that the city has, right? When you say that you don't, your fear is that the builders will run off and go elsewhere. I get that, I see...
Originally, that was the case, but like I said, now that all the cities are going that way, we're not going to have that excuse.
But even if they did, I guess, and I've used this analogy before, but I guess my thought is, if every time we build here, it costs us 50% of that fee, it costs us $2,200 in water and 3,200 or 1,600 in wastewater every time somebody builds, or we lose 4,800 bucks, 5,000 bucks, whatever, I'm rounding up, then I don't, I don't understand how it's awesome that builders keep coming and building and costing us 5,000 bucks every time they build the house. And so I get the other side, I think, too, but I would love for you to get to the 100% in large part because I was here when we paid for that, as was Larry and others, when we paid for that, that report from Duncan, and it was very specific to us. This is what the impact is for us. So if, if the council is amenable, can, yes, I like the idea of looking at 75,000 in six months, but is that something we could look at now? Is anybody amenable to that, or is that just a little too much skin right now?
Motion's been made.
For 50?
For 100. It has not been seconded.
Okay.
Can I throw one thing in, too? We've also increased base water rates.
Sewer rates, we increased sewer rates, we're going to increase water rates next month.
Another water rate increase in the future, near future.
Yes.
I know that's a little bit different animal than the impact fees.
And then I will add one other thing. The impact fees at Centerton, if I recall correctly, they had almost zero set aside for fire and police in their impact fees. So theirs was strictly for wastewater as opposed to we're already getting fire and police. So that's another impact that we are getting, so.
You know what, I'll make a second of the 100 and see where that goes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you really don't even have to do that to forward it. Once you get it to council, then, you know, if you want to change the percentage, you could do it at that point, but...
All right, I have one thing, okay. We have limited citizens, but would any citizen come up and share their opinion if they have one? No comments?
Some giggles.
I was always brought up, if you have a cost, I'm sorry, Mark Calcagni, 12, 642 Arbor Acres. If you have a cost, I don't know if this is a nonprofit, profit organization, I don't think it is. So if you have a cost, I think you want to cover it, that's all I would say.
All right, now, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Tim? Misty?
No.
Mike?
No.
So...
I'd like to make a motion that we go to...
We have the mayor, we need the mayor to vote because Amber's not here.
Mayor, would you care to vote, seeing as how we do not have Amber here tonight?
We don't have a...
Yes, it would be no.
Okay. No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, motion fails for the 100% rather than the 50.
With that said, are you guys willing to meet in the middle at 75? Anybody? No? Maybe?
I'll concede. I'll make a motion, we make it 75%.
Are you making that motion now, Danny?
Yes, sir.
I'm not thinking that's going to work out well. I won 100, but I'm absolutely willing to meet in the middle. If you guys want to go 50, I'm fine with that.
Well, we have a motion for 75.
Oh, then I'll second that motion, we'll...
Okay.
Who did the 75?
Daniel.
100 didn't make it, we'll go 75.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, this is a motion to make it 75 rather than 50 and to move to the city council, correct?
Correct.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Tim?
No.
Misty?
No.
Mike?
No.
No, okay, there's your four.
Okay.
No. Fails.
Now, we need another motion if you please.
I'll make a motion that it moves forward with what is stated in our packet.
I'll second it. I'm all about that, yeah.
Okay, 50%,
Yes, the 25.
Moving it on to our council meeting, 17th, roll call.
Okay, Daniel.
I feel like a lame duck, no.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passes to the next city council.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion of the development agreement for Renly Ray.
Good evening, council. Before you tonight, you have a developer's agreement associated with the Renly Ray subdivision. Just to give you the Cliff's Notes version, we are trying to use funds that are dictated by code for Fletcher and spend them on two other roads, including Morsani and Clint's. We've worked this over several times to where this is cost neutral for the city. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have about the numbers.
Do we have any comments from citizens about this particular item?
Lou? Technically, technically not a citizen, I'm the engineer. Happy to answer any questions y'all have as well, work closely with staff.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah, I've got a few, there's quite a few numbers changes from what we received. Do you want to just go over those for us?
Absolutely.
Please.
So Blake's done a, since the beginning, I told him he's going to have to do a lot of homework on the numbers to make sure this balances out, right? So he submitted several different versions. The first one, you should see, is the cost of what it would be to construct Fletcher today, right? And Fletcher is on the southern portion of the mound, go ahead.
Well, I think, I don't think Fletcher was not considered in either one of these because it was taken out of the equation. They said in lieu of the construction of the portion of Fletcher, they're going to spend it on Morsani. The first Exhibit A shows improvements totals of 333,631,67. The second one, the one that we received yesterday, shows 297,073,67.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, obviously, it's kind of unusual for us to see costs go down. So, you know, I...
There was a, yeah, I understand, there was a typo in the original that has been addressed with the secondary one.
That's fine, that's fine. Then you said it's a cost neutral to the city. I assume that that means the paragraph down at the bottom of the original Exhibit A, per this agreement, the city agrees to the improvements as shown, blah, blah, blah. The city cost in the project shall be 89,353.
That's the old version.
That's been removed from the one that we received yesterday.
That's correct.
So there was no cost to the city on these, okay.
And if I might, the original cost of Fletcher was $297,073,73,73 cents. The improvements on Morsani and Clint's, or Morsani was essentially 211, we're adding essentially a $46,000 improvement to Clint. And to make up the difference, they've also agreed to do an additional $40,000 of work to the water main in the area, that way it all balances.
Yeah, and I did see that, I appreciate the water main improvements, too, and the street improvements. Only thing, I mean, it leaves the rest of Morsani, you know, in the condition that it's in, which is, as we all know, is relatively poor.
Right.
The improvements that are on Clint's that go to the Long House, I don't know if I'm pronouncing their name correctly or not, I think AM. It's hard to really discern what's going on based on what we have in the, I mean, these engineered specs on C215, 216 are just practically impossible to read. So, I mean, I can't really see anything from them. So what exactly is going on there? And also, a follow-up to that, if I can, the Bratcher property that's just to the south of that, I believe some of this Renly Ray subdivision is behind that.
That's correct.
So will the Clint's or Clint, whatever, however you want to pronounce it, will those go beyond the Bratchers or do they just stop at the Wong's?
They stop at the edge of the Renly Ray property. So I don't have the plat in front of me, but it's the frontage to the road.
Only the frontage.
Yeah, the frontage to the road is what we're talking about.
That answers that question because Bratcher fronts Clint's on that side, okay.
They're obligated to do half-street improvements on the portions of the property that front the master street planned road. So on Morsani, it's easy because it's clean, the whole frontage is on there. The Clint's side is not because it's been chopped up. And so we're trying to rectify some of that with this, with this agreement.
And then I assume these aren't lock solid, this is, we're not going to pay any more than $297,000, right? I mean, it's, I don't want to say cost plus, but essentially, if it costs more than $297,000, you guys, the developers, going to pay that, right?
Right, that's, the agreement is for, so the cost is essentially, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, the maneuver was to say, how much is this worth? And how can we spend it across two different roads in the area, right? Do you have some?
And the water main.
And the water main, right. And so he went through the exercise, I actually saw the bid tabs from the contractor, so I know these numbers are good. They're also market rate according to other stuff. So I know the numbers are good, so I'm trying to do a, you know, make sure this is cost equivalent. So the city gets a good deal and the developer understands what he's trying to do.
Okay. To piggyback off of Mr. Washcoyak, again, I think what he's getting at is if it costs more than $297,000, who's going to come up with the short end of the stick, or the developer?
Right, this agreement, the improvements dictated in this agreement will be the responsibility of the...
So the monetary numbers in this are irrelevant.
Not necessarily irrelevant because the scale of the improvements matter, right? So we found a balance, they're agreeing to upgrade so many linear feet of Morsani to a section as approved in the preliminary plat, same thing with Clint's.
So on this, on this development in front of us, compared to the last one, developer had signed it, alls we saw was a signature and it said his title.
Yeah, he signed the wrong one, he's going to sign the new one.
So this one's not signed, and it's just an informality to me. Why is the front page not filled out as well? I would think if this was a contractor guarantee, that maybe that would have been signed.
The representative from the clients here, but I think with his presence, we're all agreeing to this and putting it out in front of you, it will be signed before it's all said and done. But Blake, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, yeah, and I think that's probably a lack of understanding on my part. I thought it needed to wait until city council had approved it and then fill out that part.
Well, just, the other one was signed, this one's not signed, but the front page isn't filled out at all. You know, I'd rather have the fill-in-the-blanks done before.
Yeah, I mean, this, like we all said, this is kind of a formality because we're paying all these costs anyways to improve this in accordance with city staff and with the master street plan shows. We are going...
Okay.
Our water main cost is way more than 40 grand. I mean, we're building it from our subdivision and connecting back over by where the drainage comes through and it's easily 80 or 100,000 instead of 40, so.
You can get 100.
Somewhere in that range, I would have to look at that again, but somewhere in there.
So do we know who, I mean, I can look on Data Scout and find out who has deed to the property right now. I mean, I know who's got deed to the property right now. Is that the developer?
Yes, sir.
So it's the LLC that's owned by Kevin Riggins Construction, Inc.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's the one that is footing the bill for this.
Okay, all right. Oh, there is one provision of the land development guarantee, and this may not be something that, number, I'm sorry, did I, did I... Oh, there is one provision of the land development guarantee, and this may not be something that, number, I'm sorry, did I, did I overstep my bounds here? I, I'm, I'm sorry. Number nine, and says during construction, the developers, contractors, subcontractors shall keep the public roads, highways surrounding property clean. This may be a question more for the city. Who's gonna police that?
So with any construction project, there's a, a section of the construction plan that's called an erosion control plan and a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a SWIP, right? They've submitted one. They'll have to get that approved through ADQ
Right.
and implement it on-site. The, Philip is our stormwater inspector. He's the one that goes through and, and checks that stuff. If it gets bad enough, it can go to ADQ for a potential validation.
Okay.
And we'll have a third party that does that anyway.
Somebody that follows. Okay. Thank you. That's a, I think that's all the questions I have about this, so I will shut up.
I mean, I get the, the, the point of this agreement and what we're trying to line out, but I just always have a hesitancy with our past relationships that we've had. I know we were supposed to, we gave up half-street improvements on Spinoto and an extension on that to get Monagony, and now we're footing the bill for that. And, you know, we've had other issues with sidewalks not being completed. So I just have hesitancies on that with, you know, making deals with developers.
Because of that, we've worked and now are doing land development agreements so that you guys get to see this upfront, right? Everybody's got their cards on the table. He's agreeing to the improvements and said there's no question of what should be installed at the time of final plat, right? I know in the past, some of the agreements were not this formal. We've moved forward to improve that process, and that's what you're seeing in front of you.
So you think this is a pretty concrete
Yeah, I mean
avenue of
Absolutely.
securing that we get something and not get, you know.
Learn from your mistakes and improve, and that's what this is.
Because we've, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a water fee we can't use for anything else other than that, so, you know. It'd be nice to not have a half-street improvements that we've got to put the bill on as well.
That's what this is for. This is, that's exactly why this is made.
I'd make a motion that we move this to city council.
I'll second.
Roll call.
So we're gonna move this to next city council with the agreement completed and signed by the developer prior to the meeting.
I'm sorry, do we have, we have a special tonight?
That's not on this.
Okay.
This is not going to the special.
Okay. So is that good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right. Next, on our new business, we have a discussion. Oh, by the way, we are going to get a sidewalk on the Napa, I was informed today.
Yes. Yes, we just received word. Go ahead, Mike.
Can, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can I bring just a kind of a point of order to something that was brought up earlier about what Mr. Clark asked for? You know, it was the bid openings and the rezoning. I looked at this in, in the packet, and what, there's six pages here? It's basically the low bid and the rezone thing that you want. And you wanted us to discuss that. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the bid opening was something that I had asked to get on there. The planning or permits department did have that rezoning also for your consideration.
Okay, and you just wanted, you wanted us to discuss these things tonight, is that right?
Um, yeah, I mean, as far as
I mean, it may be a dead issue since nobody, we may not be able to bring it back up, I don't know, but I was just gonna suggest that, I mean, maybe we take a five or ten-minute recess, look this thing over, and then decide if we want to discuss it or pass it on. But if it's a dead issue, I'll let it be a dead issue, so I may be out of order.
There was no seconds.
No second. All right, so I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to clear that up before we move further.
Yes, sir. You want to talk about, we received information today. Actually, the Highway Commission had to approve the TAP grants. We applied, and thanks, I appreciate Zach actually put the cost estimate together and put a design together on the, finishing the sidewalks along Ardamani. As you know, the Napa area was not finished by the developer, and so we got the grant. And so we're excited about that. And as soon as we hear on what the steps are involved, then we'll get going. Hopefully, it'll get done this year. I know that we'll have to get some formal plans. Zach will have to be doing that and sending it to Ardat, and then if once they sign off that, then we can proceed on it. Questions? Okay, the Bandini, as you see, we have a, basically a resolution that was sent to the mayor a couple of weeks ago, actually, expressing the willingness of the city of Tony Town to utilize state aid, street money for the downtown resurfacing project, which is the original Bandini resurfacing and widening. That was all based on the fire station, if you remember back when that happened. So you look at the resolution, it doesn't cost us anything. This is a hundred percent paid by the state aid. And we met with their engineer early spring this year. The only thing that they wanted us to do is make sure that the stormwater wasn't in good shape. If you go by right now, we did hire a crew to put in a stormwater box there at the south side of Bandini and Barrington that connects all the stormwater underneath Barrington and underneath Bandini and extended that. So when they come through and resurface that and widen that, that'll all be there, and hopefully the fire trucks will be able to turn properly. As that was one of the main issues that we had. Any, I'm recommending that we move this forward to council so we can get this sent off to Ardat. Question, Mike?
Citizen comment? Seeing none. Counsel?
Uh, this, so this is for Bandini, and you're saying this, this state aid street money's gonna fund it one hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
As I remember, before I was on the council, this being discussed, and I thought the price tag was well over a million dollars.
No.
No. Two hundred and thirty thousand or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was two hundred.
Oh, okay. Well, that's
They're doing some little extras to it. You know, we're getting a pretty wide street.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, I mean, this is up to three hundred thousand. They'll bid it out.
Okay.
And then, you know, whoever, whoever gets the bid, then that's what they'll do.
So does the parentheses beside construction at a max of three hundred thousand mean anything to us? Is it gonna max out? Is it gonna max out at three hundred?
We're, we're entitled three hundred thousand. They assured us that that's plenty of money to be able to get the project done.
When do you think we'll be able to start it? Once we get this turned in, when do you think we'll be able to start it?
Yeah. I, I would hope this, I, I, I know that it's in the queue to try to get it started early summer.
I'll be grateful because you, if somebody's on the road there, you can't turn onto the road. You have to just wait.
I'd make a motion we move this to city council.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, we have the Waterworth Financial Utility Planning presentation with Mr. Latham and Mr. Clark.
Arien, are you with us?
Yep, I was there all the way. Yes, I'm here. I was there listening all the way through. It was very fun. I loved the venue also, everyone. It was, it looks really beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. I guess I'll just introduce Arien, and I'm sorry, I never get your last name right.
No, it's okay. Chavla. It's, it's all good.
All right. With Waterworth, and he's gonna talk to us about the water and sewer financial forecasting.
Perfect. And I also just wanted to make sure that I was able to share my screen a little later on. I'll give a small introduction, but just wanted to make sure I was able to do that. If you could give me the permissions to do so.
Yes.
Thanks, James. All right. Perfect. So, hi, everyone. My name is Ari. I'm with the Client Success Team here at Waterworth. Just to provide some context to everyone here, Waterworth is a software platform that empowers local governments like Tony Town, like yours, towards achieving financial sustainability while balancing affordability and intergenerational equity, so you don't pass on those, that burden to future generations as well. Now, we know that this is tough, but it can be done through the practice of what's called continuous revenue management, which is two things. One, keeping a live financial forecast model up to date at all times, which you will see today, that James and Mark have been working really hard at. And two, keeping you or elected officials informed on a continuous basis about the financial reality so you can make those smart decisions quickly and efficiently. Think of it more to do with results, not reports. And today, you're just gonna be seeing the visualizations for the water and wastewater funds, current trajectory developed by James and Mark for you to consider, discuss, and iterate upon. My role here today is not to advise you on what to do. At the end of the day, you are the experts of the community. My expertise is in our platform. I will help explain the underlying math in motion, and if desired, facilitate a conversation around the models to help inform any decisions you may want to make. Okay, I'm just gonna pause here for a moment, just in case there are any initial questions about my introduction.
I'm sure I'm eager to hear what you've got to say.
Carry on.
Oh, I'm, I'm excited too. Okay, I just can't still share my screen. That's what I'm falling short on right now. For some reason. I remember with James yesterday, I was able to do it, so just wondering what changed.
It might be on who, who was running the meeting, if it was James that was running or if it was you, Ari. Because if it was you, you might have been able to share your screen, because I see on his screen, he's got the capability to share his screen.
Yeah, it, it said that only meeting organizers and presenters can share on that end. So I'm wondering if you can maybe click on my name and maybe the permissions come there, perhaps, change the title or something.
Maybe it's under engagement.
Choose the co-organizer.
Down there at the bottom, who can present? See, it says only organizers and co-organizers, it says. Everyone, there he goes.
Oh, perfect. I got it. Thank you.
I use Teams at my day job.
Is that Misty?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Awesome. Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen here. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So we're looking at right now is the homepage for Waterworth. We have so many different models down here that I will explain. And this is currently the water side, with Tony Town Water and Wastewater. And I'll be touching on both of them, but I'll begin by going over water and what do these wonderful graphs actually show us? Okay, so first, I'm just gonna show the financial reality of what we're facing in the water side. We are, James, me and Mark have spent a lot of time to split the two service areas and discuss about it. And in the end, after showing you the water, wastewater, we'll show you the combined fund. How does it look like? So starting with water, the first thing you're gonna see is that the current reality is that we have our revenue requirements in one side, then we have our revenues, and then we finally have our cash flow targets, our guidelines, and our position finally. So when I start breaking it down slowly and just focus on the revenue requirements, we have our operating expenses. You can see that from twenty-one to twenty-five has been captured, with twenty-five being the budget here. And we have this little bump in the, in twenty-twenty-three for some expenses. And then from twenty-five onwards, you can see that it rides off the sunset due to the inflation of three to five percent being tacked on to those expenses as a standard for the industry. After that, we raise it by contracted services. On top of that, that's where you start to see the same type of workflow. And by twenty-twenty-five, it starts to flatten out because it's just in line with inflation. Now, once we have those two in, we also start to focus on current debt service. Now, it's a little bit much smaller, somewhere around seventy thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five coming up. And then we have a proposed debt service, which exists for one, a project later down in the future, so sitting at around in twenty-thirty-one. That's what it's proposed. It's not really confirmed yet. And finally, we have our capital improvements. Now, you see the two, you see some peaks and valleys on our screens right now. You have the big project in twenty-twenty-five, those water towers. And then you also have these, the bigger project in twenty-thirty-one or for five months. That's when you take out that loan supposedly. And also, in the end, you see this little placeholder that we put in there just to show the community that we will be spending some money in the future beyond our CIP as well, just so that we don't, it's not sitting at zero, and it's more realistic. And after this, in front of our screens, we see that, okay, we have all the revenue requirements together. And this is what we need to do. We need to make sure that our revenues can match it or build up a surplus, at least. So I start layering in our sale of water service, which is from our, primarily from our rate earners. And then we have our other operating revenues, some developer contributions coming in, and then non-operating revenues from the sales tax, that's coming in, revenues from the general fund. And then we finally have some borrowed funds, which is actually the money that we're receiving to pay for the capital project, and we're paying the debt service from that date onwards. So now, these all gives us a beautiful picture of city skyline-esque picture where you have the skyscrapers in the front and the foregrounds, and the backgrounds are the mountains of the expenses. Once you start overlaying them too, you recognize two things. One is that when the skyscrapers are taller than the mountains or the buildings are taller than the mountains, we start to see the cash position tend to rise once I turn the layer on. And whenever you see those gaps where you see the mountains are taller, let's say in twenty-twenty-seven, it is taller than our building, we'll start to see the cash position start to fall, which is evident from twenty-seven to twenty-nine. So once I turn it on, you'll see that we're, we're steadily growing over the years, and by twenty-twenty-six, we start to see a decline. That's when those gaps come in from the mountain, the buildings. And eventually, we see ourselves being at a negative balance, again, this for the water side, sitting at a negative fifty-one thousand dollars. By twenty-thirty-two, after the big project also gets done, we're using our reserves to pay for those. Now, another thing to keep in mind is that we have, we want to also maintain some guidelines, because what about reserves, right? So if I isolate the cash position, this is, this is scale in front of us, and I put in the operating threshold, the operating threshold essentially where James and Mark mentioned about having six months of our operating expenses, which also includes full debt service coverage ratio, like debt service coverage, rather. Means we can pay for all of our debt for that given year and also six months of operating. So that builds up our rainy day funds. In case we have any unexpected operating expenses, which is what that red dot line shows you right there. So the key being that in twenty-thirty, not twenty-thirty-two, we start to use our reserves, and that puts our community under higher risk because once we start using those rainy day funds and we keep using them for a two-year time period, if any unexpected costs do arise, we may have to take some other drastic actions, and we can't tap into our reserves. And on top of this, we also maintain a cash position target. That's where I put this layer on top of it. And the reason for that, and you see this little black dotted line that appears, is that we want to maintain a capital reserve. So we have the red dotted line that builds up, and that, that's for operating expenses. And a line on top of that represents a reserves, a buffer that we want to keep of capital projects. That's where you can see that we're spending about eight hundred thousand dollars in our reserves, not spending. We're keeping it aside in reserves from the operating threshold. So one point five million, let's say in year twenty-twenty-nine, is what we have in operating threshold. And then about two point three is what we want a target to be around. And this doesn't mean that that's where we have to be at all times, rather, it's where we want to fluctuate around. So the key goal is that we want to stay above the red dotted line right here and then fluctuate amongst this, along this line, this black dotted line that we see in along this line, this black dotted line that we see in front of us here. Because some years we'll build up our reserves, let's say it'll be higher than the black dotted line. And some years we'll be using our reserves to be spending for those capital projects that we may come across in the future. But the key being is we don't want to go below this red dollar. And that's the key for all the subsequent models that I'll be showing. Right, perfect. It's gonna get a little pause right here, because I know this is all new information. Perfect. So now, I'm just gonna head into our scenarios. And I'll have a secret one for that. I think Mr. Daniel, I remember you mentioned about impact fees as well, so I'll bring back to that. I was just hearing it and I was interested, discuss about a little bit as well. But let's focus on scenarios that we have and that James and Mark discussed as well. So the first one that we spoke about is that we have all these different, the same parameters where we have the twenty-twenty-five. I just break it down, the operating expenses, contracted services, current debt service, capital improvements. And the reason what you notice is that if you don't have proposed debt, that's because in this particular scenario, we have grant funding mapped out for us in twenty-thirty-one. And we're like, okay, that saves us a lot of money. That means you don't have to pay a debt service for beyond that point. But when I do pull out and I show us how the cash position looks like, it has a very similar result. Where, whereby if I isolate it, we will be going below operating threshold by twenty-thirty itself. So it doesn't matter what happens in twenty-thirty-one, although it's really good and extends our time period as well. That means by twenty-thirty-three, we'll see our cash position in the red and we'll stay in the black for longer. But the result will be the same. It doesn't, it won't make a, it won't be a dramatic, it will make a dramatic impact on our position. And the same goes for the cash position target right here as well. This is after we made the adjustments for the year twenty-twenty-five as well, the budgeted values. So that's just one scenario that we have and we just tailored it and added that grant funding instead of the borrowed funds. And when you go to the third scenario, which is we have borrowing plus some re-adjustments, we start to see an improvement in our cash position. So in this case, if we just, let's say, isolate the cash position itself, we start to see that our cash position is able to stay afloat for much longer with the operating threshold. And you can see that we just, we only pinched through the operating threshold by twenty-thirty-one and we're able to stay in the black for an extended period of time. While also being in line with our cash position target. And this was just a potential strategy. This is where we go to step seven and we play around with those different rates. I also wanted to point out that we did map out growth in the community of three percent on ongoing basis. It's just a number that we are arbitrarily using right now. And the rate structure that we went with for, from twenty-twenty-five and beyond is we just had ten percent, twelve percent, ten percent. Again, these are just numbers that we just played around with to make sure that we can stay afloat for a bit longer. Perhaps there are different suggestions. But this just shows the, how much rev, how much we need to increase our revenues to stay in the black for extended period of time. And this five percent that we see towards the end stays as an ongoing basis. Who's ahead? Because this is our first model, I think we'll be discussing this in the wastewater side of things as well. Does anyone has any quick questions?
Well, on that first screen you've got, or the screen that you have in front of us now, you said you have on twenty-twenty-five and going forward, you have a three percent population growth. My question kind of goes to Mr. Latham. I don't think we, currently we're not at a three percent growth increase, are we? I would say we're higher than three percent. So I'd be interested in seeing that a little higher. And seeing what that does to, you know, the graph.
Well, the great thing about this is, is we will have this.
To model it.
Okay, and we're gonna have the model. And so you would be able to adjust that.
As you go.
Potentially what's your growth rate, you know, basically kind of look at how many houses have basically been sold. And then look at two and a half people per house. So, you know, then we can adjust that specifically. This is a fantastic tool. As you guys know, one of the big things that I'm a big believer in is not coming up here and say, hey, by the way, we need a twenty percent increase in water. This right here will tell us exactly what we need to increase, but you, because you know where those lines need to meet. And it's easier to just do easy rates each year than it is to not do anything for five years and then to say, hey, it's like Springdale did, you know, hey, by the way, it's gonna cost you a hundred percent. I mean, people are not gonna, they can, they can go along with three to five percent. It's when you start hitting those higher levels that, and that we hit at. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And to answer your questions as well, as Mark mentioned, that if I change this, let's say to four percent, maybe we were taking three percent, it's too conservative. If I take a four percent, that's how it looks like on an annual basis. That changes the graph automatically and you see that the cash position now is doing much better. This is the four percent on an ongoing basis.
Right, from that point.
You see there. Yep. So let's just say that, one of the other ideas as well that Mr. Latham was mentioning is that if I had three percent, maybe I put this at four, but the issue that will arise is, let's say if we wait, the cost of inaction is something that I will showcase in the wastewater model as well. Is that if I were to just move this a year ahead and put three percent in there, that would help. But again, this is a model with about three percent growth rate. Just pushing those re-adjustments would allow, would almost make our situation much worse in the future, where just, there's a, there's a big cost of inaction that we show with our graphs. That, for example, if I just kept it at three percent sitting there, you can clearly see that's the same reaction that we had in the models that I showed prior. But having this, at least an idea of a rate structure that we want to move with, maybe it's a ten percent throughout, and then eventually you want to drop it down to five, is the beauty of this model. We want to play around with what works for citizens, be mindful what's palatable for everyone as well, right? And that's how we come up with different rate structures. And this primarily is just showing us how much we want to increase our revenues by. It's across the board, essentially. Awesome. Okay, is it fine if I just move on to wastewater? Or should I, if I can even show you the scenario, sir, I think you had mentioned about impact fees. This is just me making a diagram really quickly. I just made it right when you guys were mentioning it. So, and I just made it show that the impact fee grows from, let's say, one eighty in twenty-twenty-five, the fifty percent motion. And then perhaps by twenty-twenty-six, we want to increase it to a hundred percent. And what would be the impact of that? That's something that could be up to your discussion at a later stage. If it was also a four percent growth rate. Perfect. Is it okay if I move on to wastewater?
Let me ask one question, please.
Yes, sir.
The rate increase down at the bottom, I presume it's exactly what it says. We increased the rate of water to consumers by these percentages in these years?
Yes, from twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty onwards. Yes, sir.
So it's proposing ten percent, twelve, ten, ten, then I see. So every, each year, there's a percentage increase in the water rate for consumers. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thought that's what it meant. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Good question, sir. Awesome. Okay, I'm just gonna show the same case for wastewater, where I have, let's say, the baseline master, just the first one, the model that we initially had. Here you can see the operating expenses that we're used to, and then you can see that I've added a three percent inflation. That's why you see it grow incrementally. Then we have the contracted services, which are a larger portion of our operating. And then we have our current debt service, which is pretty miniscule here. It's, I think, sitting at zero essentially. And then we have our capital improvements, and you have this Mount Everest that we see there about in twenty-twenty-nine for about eight point four million dollars. So all of this combined makes up our revenue requirements. And you can also see I've left a placeholder in there for about five hundred thousand dollars, increasing at a three percent inflation, just to tell us that we will be spending some money. So just because the cash might go up at that time, doesn't mean we won't be spending more on capital that may come up in the future. Might see more, some more mountains. But once we're a year, I start layering in our rates, which is our sale of sewer service, other operating revenue, developer contributions, some non-operating revenues from the sales tax, and then we get our grants as well. So all of these make up our revenues and expenses. Same truth follows where we have the mountains, especially in twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, that are using most of our reserves. And when I layer in our cash position line, that's when you start to see by twenty-twenty-eight itself, it's not able to cover those expenses, especially with the current funding strategy that we have. And that's when you start to see it dip below by twenty-twenty-eight, we're sitting at a negative two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And by twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-seven, we're looking, we're seeing that we're falling below our operating threshold. Never mind the target itself. And that's when we're starting to use our rainy day funds. So if we go, and this is where James and Mark use their magic and start moving some projects around, trying to make it more feasible for the community without having to do really aggressive re-adjustments. They came up with this strategy where if I just go back to the homepage, we have some re-adjustments in motion as well as if I just break it down to, from operating contracted to, operating contract and current debt is the same. But the capital improvements, you can see it's, instead of that big Mount Everest, they've broken it down to more peaks and valleys. And we can see that the products are more split across. And that allows us, along with some re-adjustments, which I'll talk about, to manage these expectations and these projects themselves. So if I have the sale of water, sale of sewer service, other operating revenue, operating grants, developer contributions, all of them together make up this beautiful picture. And we can see that just without even layering the cash position itself, that we're able to meet those mountains at least rather easily compared to what we're seeing from twenty-six to twenty-nine in the previous model. And that's, and that's reflective. If I just isolate the cash itself, you can see that, yes, there are a few years that we are getting close and we're sitting at around eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-eight. But we're able to build ourselves up and stay on the mark as well. That's when I show the operating threshold. You can see that, yes, we're below the operating threshold for a few years, but that's why we have the rainy day funds. Maybe we can, we can try to change some projects, increase our rates more and try to be above that red dotted line. But at least we're not staying below it for too long. Maybe a year or two, if it's manageable and it's not too risky, we can manage to handle ourselves. But you can also see that the cash position target is also acting and you can clearly see that we're able to stay around that mark. Now, as mentioned before, with the capital improvements, clearly, the reason why you see the cash position rarely ride off the sunset here and sitting at four million dollars is because we haven't really added any projects in, at least the bigger ones from twenty-thirty-one to twenty-thirty-six. Once you see a bigger project come into place, that's when you'll start to see the cash position start to go down. At least balance out closer to our targets. And as for the rate adjustments, if I just go to step seven, I have put, let's say, it down from twenty-four to twenty-five. And we see that we have a three percent growth rate, fifteen percent for two years and then ten percent. These are just projected values that we have in there. And we're sitting at a five percent leading out from twenty-twenty-eight on an ongoing basis. So fifteen, fifteen, ten, ten, and then the five. And the best part is, as Mark mentioned, we can always come back every year and adjust them. But this is just the current strategy that allows us to have a long-term view into how we need or how much we should be increasing our revenues. Because at a certain point, once you start increasing your rates, you'll start to see a taper off and see that, okay, once we reach, let's say, about three point four million dollars in revenue, we don't need to increase our revenues super aggressively. And we can just manage to keep it three to five percent. And let's say if I wanted to bring it down by twenty-thirty-two to three percent, that would be the impact and we will be fine. But again, keeping in mind, we don't have any big capital projects coming in. I'm gonna pause there for any questions. All good? Perfect. Okay. And I also built this last scenario as well, just for showing the impact fees in twenty-twenty-six being a hundred percent while listening to the conversations. And that would be the impact. Initially, you could, if you were increasing the impact fees by a hundred percent, you could reduce it down, let's say, to seven percent for the rate increase of a sewer. And that would allow us to have more flexibility if you were increasing it by a higher amount. Maybe you keep it at five and that would help us. Yep. So, sorry, go ahead, sir.
That's great. I mean, that with a hundred percent in the impact fees, that just shows us, you know, where our, you can definitely see the significance difference that has on our, you know, on the dotted lines versus the hard line. This chart, so I'm, I'll get this tool's able to show us and, you know, kind of help us forecast.
Exactly. And that's the whole goal, right? Like as James also mentioned earlier, we can phase it in. And then by twenty-six, twenty-seven, we can start to see that, okay, this is the impact, getting the hundred percent in and having that increase in the future. Alright. Perfect. So I'm just gonna go back. And finally, one of the key parts is that because there's just one fund, we have the combined function as well, where we can show that if I just combine our models together, let's say this is the baseline master without any readjustments, just the current strategy in place. You can see that the cash position line as of right now with both the funds, even if they start subsidizing each other, is trailing downwards and by twenty-thirty, we're sitting at a negative three point or three point nine million dollars. And we're also gonna be below our operating threshold somewhere in around twenty-twenty-eight. With the current prediction. So if I do, let's say, go for some other scenarios that we have built out for ourselves, I go, let's take the grant scenario, and then we shift some projects around for sewer. You can see that the impact on the cash position is much better. We're staying afloat, we're staying in the, in the black, we're not going below the red. But we're below our operating threshold. So maybe water needs a bit more support, because we're doing, we're doing good stuff for sewer, where we're increasing the impact rates as well. Maybe I just take scenario two, which is our, without any increments in impact fees. I just put that in. This is, this is the outcome that we're looking at right now. We are going below our operating threshold eventually, but on, up until twenty-thirty-one.
But is that because we don't have thirty, twenty-thirty-two and even more in the future planned out with anything?
Yes, that's also another thing.
Essentially, this model's stopping around twenty-thirty-two. We don't have anything planned out from that point forward.
Yeah, nothing, nothing that's too concrete. That's a great point. So because if I look at capital improvements, you can see by twenty-thirty-two, it's all the placeholders that I put in place with Mark and James. And the thing is, we can always come back, let's say, if we meet every quarter and, or maybe at least by early, we can look at the capital improvements and the products in the future and keep updating them. Maybe we get some project for twenty-thirty-three or twenty-thirty-four in the next six months that we want to add in. That's a priority at that point. So in the end, if I just take the best case scenario where we do, where we do have a borrowing So in the end, if I just take the best-case scenario, where we do, where we do have a boring scenario, and we also move the products around, is that you end up with this beautiful little graph right here, that shows us the cash position staying afloat, being above its operating threshold, and also in line with this cash position target. Now, for 2032, 2032, as Mr. Daniel mentioned, it's currently riding off the sunset, you know, the cash, but once you start adding capital products in, that's gonna change. Any questions? Or comments? Awesome. So that's all I had, unless James or Mark wanted to, wanted me to talk about something else as well.
Unless you guys have any question.
I'd just like to, to reiterate what Mark said earlier. I mean, this is a tool, and uh, like with any program, you're, you get out of it what you put into it. And uh, you know, we've, we've had to put a lot of uh, a lot of numbers in there, you know, projecting what we're gonna try to do with capital projects. And uh, you know, it's gonna be a living document for us over the next few years. And, and as things change, obviously, these, these charts and numbers will change.
I believe Mr. Burr's had a question, I'm not sure.
You have a few. Uh, Ari, thank you. Uh, really cool software. I know you guys were founded in 2009, you're out of Vancouver, British Columbia, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Based on the little bit of research that I've done, uh, I understand you guys are in all, well, like, every US state, at least one municipality is using this, except Indiana, West Virginia, Wisconsin. And uh, so that's, I mean, that helps me feel a little better. But who are the primary competitors in your space?
That's a great question.
Does Water, the Bentley product, does that, does that compete in this space?
Well, I personally haven't heard of anyone in that particular space. I would say that we're in a unique situation where usually, the way we, we were founded, you know, was our founder JP Jolly. He was a rate consultant when he first started out, and he used to use Excel a lot. And most of our uh, let's say, clients that we initially, or prospects, which were, which are there, would use Excel. And that's when we differentiate ourselves. So we tried to bridge the gap between Excel and consultants, that would be our direct competitors, you would say. And when it comes to software, there are softwares that do financial, but no one specializes like in, in utilities like we do. There are other things maybe I'm not familiar with. There might be other softwares out there, but I haven't heard any of them so far.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate that, that answer. And uh, so, w- w- this is more to Mark and James. When you were looking for a solution, or I, I should say, how did you fall upon this solution? Did, did, were you looking for something? Did you look at other areas? How did you stumble across this? And have you looked at others? That was like eight questions in one, and you can answer this one.
I've been familiar with Waterworks before. And um, just looking at some simple solution that we can make decision-making with, that, as you guys know, you, you know, you don't want to leave your position with the city in a very bad position. And the other thing that I like about this software is, is that, you know, we talked about borrowing. Borrowing is, in my opinion, is a bad word, but if we have to, we will. But you can utilize this software, which he's just saying, is you can see a peak up there, of which you would have funding to be able to do larger projects with the money when it puns back. Now, we used our 10-year plan, and we gave that to him. That's where you see all those capital. The major capital that James is located in 2029 really is to replace the old main sewer lift station and make that into a um, gravity fit, get, get away from that one down on Barrington. Um, and there, eventually, it's gonna get over, you know, overused for sure. Uh, but um, that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with it. They, they show them at shows, they could be in Arkansas Municipal League, they might be in some other shows that are around, so. But it was my uh, familiarity with them.
So you, you didn't, like, go look for a company, you went, you went to Waterworks? And is that because there aren't others that?
Well, I mean, they're fairly reasonable. I mean, it's, it's not like it's a $100,000 deal here.
I'm glad you said that, because I noticed the cost hasn't come up yet, or at least I didn't quite catch it.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so can we talk about that?
The cost?
Yeah.
I think it's, what is it, what was it, $10,000?
It was uh, $9,000.
$9,000.
Yearly.
And so that's a subscription, it's cloud-based, I understand, right? Okay. And then who on our end, who here in Tonnitown would manage it? How would they be trained? How would they be supported? Because the tool's only as good as the guy who knows how to use it.
They give the support. I mean, anytime that we need it, um, they'll be able to support us. Um, we, James and I will probably be the primary people that will be using it, along with our lovely finance director, Pat, who always keeps charge of the money.
He is lovely.
So I think it's a, it, you know, what I've seen in a few years is, it's a great tool for decision-making. You know, we come to you all, just, you know, just like we were talking about impact fees, and he got to show you something that, right?
Yeah, oh yeah. It's a great forecasting tool, and you know.
Yep, yep. And I'm not sure that we won't back, be back to you in six months, asking for an increase on the impact fees. Just basically looking at what, what's hap- that showed.
Well, I will, I will say, um, knowing what programs cost in my day-to-day job, this is, that's nothing in the price of programming and dashboards. And, I mean, my company, my daytime company's paying millions of dollars for programs a year. So that, that's, I'm impressed with the price.
It's gonna be a cost-saving measure for you all. And it's also gonna be a good decision-making tool. And then you can, you know, my, James and I talked about, you know, they show the red line, basically making sure that you can, you know, meet the obligations that you have along with saving that six months. But the black line up there is what I think we ought to be shooting for. Because that gives you capital money that you don't have to buy, you know, borrow, to be able to make those improvements, including impact fees, is what those suffer there. So that's just my.
You talking about the cash position, or the cash position target?
Target.
What's that, Mike? I didn't hear.
Were you talking about the cash position, or the cash position target? It's the black line. You said the black line.
Cash position target, it was the black line.
Well, the solid, I think it's, is it?
The red one is. Ari, you wanna make that clear?
Yeah, sure, sure. So I'll just show my screen again as well. So it's uh, essentially the black solid line is the cash position itself. And the black dotted line that we see right here is the cash position target that we want to stay above. And this is with the two scenarios towards the end, that we're able to stay above and around the target, as Mark was mentioning.
That's, that's what I would like to see.
With, and that's with the two scenarios, one of borrowing and the other at 100% on the impact fee.
That's correct.
Now, if you take off the impact fees, that, that solid line drops significantly sooner.
Believe so.
Mm-hmm. So I mean, thank you for bringing up the point, you know, that if in six months, you're looking at us at, at coming back to increase to maybe 75%. Think about how much we could have saved if we would have went up to 100% six months earlier.
Yeah. Just give you a perspective on just the subdivisions right now, that there's probably four that will be opened up here by at least, uh, you know, some are gonna be opened up sooner. Some are gonna be opened up by, by the end of the year, but um, you know, you're looking at, on, on the street, and the public safety will be probably close to 1.7 million on those subdivisions. This, that's on public streets and public safety. So. Any questions?
I, I got one more for Ari. Um, so, you know, we, we talked about looking at, you know, touching base every, either quarter, semi-annually or annually. What does that do to the subscription, the annual subscription? Does, I'm, I would assume if we meet frequent, more frequently, um, it's going to increase that? Um, or how, how does that work?
I, I, actually, no. It stays the same, because my whole goal with all my clients and every community that I aim to help is that the more frequently we meet, but for shorter durations, like, for example, today, we were here for at least, uh, let's say, 30 to 40 minutes on my end. If you could even shorten that out to maybe 10 minutes, where I just come in every quarter, show you guys what's going on, and you're so familiar with it, that it only takes 10 minutes to understand what's going on. And that, in the end, that's the same time as a whole year, but you're more well-informed about the decisions and about the changes that we're making on an ongoing basis. And even if it's a bit more time, it's okay, because that's what we're here to help, right? That's the end goal. We want those results for you, not just billable ours.
Yeah, that's great. I, I think on the front end, it'll be a lot of setup, kind of like Mark had said, you know, he gave you our 10-year capital improvement plan, so that was how you're able to build this model. And so I think the startup would be hard, but, I mean, even, I would think half, every six months, looking at this would help you project and, you know, adapt and react, instead of being, and be proactive rather than reactive.
They also included in that charge was, is they're going to give us a water and sewer rate analysis where you take a look at, we're gonna take it all. So that's included in this.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. And uh, Mark as well, like, we, we are actually gonna be going to billing data as well. We're currently working on that. It's a new project, uh, apart from the LFM. This is not the only thing. We actually have uh, other, more components, but I want to just focus on the LFM today, the long-term financial model as a whole. Be fun to meet everyone in a couple of months or so.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, Ari, I'd just like to thank you for bringing this before us.
Thank you, Ari.
The pleasure's always mine. It was awesome to be here. Take care, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Cruz.
Bye.
All right. Uh, next, we have a five-minute pause. A five-minute clock pause. By the way, for what it's worth, they have a great reputation with the people that work with them. People love them. Love, love, love them. Yeah, people absolutely love them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Next, we have a discussion or a presentation of the Salary Administration Procedure Guide by Mr. Mark Clayton.
I am recommending that this actually move to, to the council meeting. Have a resolution. We'd like it as a policy, if you agree to do that. What I'm presenting, and there was three handouts I handed. They were supposed to be put in your packet, which were attachments, but I guess they didn't get added. One is the grade structure. The other one is matrix. And then the other one is, I believe, the license pay per hour. Got it? Okay. Can you get it, Mike?
It came with your first email that you sent on this.
Oh, did it?
I don't think it came with our packet, but it is.
Okay.
It did.
I just wanted you to know that, that I'll be kind of referencing that. Well, let me just kind of go over this quickly and then try to answer some questions. What this is, is the plan actually incorporates a grade structure comprised of twelve grades, grades. Salary increases are really based on merit, and you'll see a little merit-based thing that we'll be working on. It also incorporates longevity, which the city doesn't have. And I'll talk briefly about that. And then there's a process and procedures to maintain the plan over time. And I'm not going to go through a whole. You can read what you need to read. But what we currently have, we're using a market-based salary that was produced by Johannes back in, I believe, 2020. And it was market-based. So what they did is they went out to several cities that are within our area of similar sizes and basically took a, a position of water operator and said, okay, you know, this is the salary that needs to be done. What this plan actually utilizes is, is it's based on, first of all, is, let me just say, is that the only job descriptions that were actually in the city prior to us actually completing this was in police and fire. There were no job descriptions at all for any other positions. And so what we've done is we've created job descriptions for everyone else. The second thing we did with the jobs was, is we ran them through a questionnaire. It's called a job analysis questionnaire. Like, what's your education requirement? If it requires you to have a high school degree, you don't score a lot of points. But if it requires you to have a bachelor's degree, then you score a lot of points. So if it requires you to go to a trade school of two years or something, that generates more points. The second thing it does is what experience is needed in the job? None experience? Six months? One year? Some of them are up to five years. So that's another one that generates points. What type of skills, licensing, and certifications are needed for that position? And one thing that, that is interesting about doing a market base is, is that, you know, if you have a water operator in Lowell, they might not need a certification, a water certification that is required in ours. Okay? Or like in street, do they require you to have a CDL? Those are the things that are basically placed in these job descriptions of what we require and how the points were generated. Then you go on to supervisor responsibilities. How many people do you actually supervise? What personal contacts are required from a higher level? So, I mean, are you, is it just the public? Is it people in RDOT or, you know, something like that? Or even higher? So there are different levels of that that creates basically a level and how many points are generated. Budget responsibilities? That's another one. Yes, Mike? Yeah, that's how, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then budget responsibilities, judgment and problem solving, decision, level of decision-making. And then what work environment? So, you know, if you work like we do in City Hall, it, you don't score a lot of points. But if you're out with the guys digging water line repairs or street stuff, it's a lot higher. So what I did was, is I went through all the job descriptions and run every one of these job descriptions through this survey, and it generated points. So if you look at, if you look at the twelve step, twelve step, where it has a grade levels, there are grades one through twelve. And you see that there's a minimum. So like, let's say, for instance, if you hire somebody and they're in a grade three and they're, they don't have the experience that's necessary, you know, that's where you would start them. If you had somebody that's fully certified and got all the stuff and everything, you could start them at a midpoint if you wanted to. So each one of them has a minimum, has a midpoint, and then there's a maximum that's paid at that gap. You can see on the job points, this is how they were actually put into place. Where it's one hundred and fifty up to five forty. So how do we, how do we go? And really what this does is it's a much more fair or equitable way to be able to make sure that our employees are paid what they should be paid, not just based on the market, but based on really what their job description is and place them in an actual grade structure. Secondly, what we did was, I mentioned we got a point system in there. So what's going to happen is during a budget review, the mayor and Pat, the finance director, will actually sit down and figure out what the, and go back to the matrix, what is going to be the annual contribution or percentage. Now, this merit-based, and this merit-based, this has got nothing to do with how long you've worked here. It doesn't, you know. What happens is, is that you end up having, kind of like if you're in a union, and believe me, when I was in Illinois, I had seven unions I had to negotiate with, which was a lot of fun. But, no, I mean, you know, you can be a very poor employee, or you can be the fantastic employee, but then all you're going to do is get your, your annual raise, and everybody gets the same. And it's not fair to employees who do a fantastic job. So what this merit thing does is basically, the mayor and Pat will basically set a annual compensation, which will be within the budget. This one's based on four percent. And so what happens is, is that they go through, and we just finished up. Everybody has actually completed a job evaluation this year. First time that I know of. But anyway, we finally got that done. And then, you know, you have an area that has needs of improvement. These are scored, and they're checked by a point system. So you've got needs improvement, meets expectations, and exceeds. So if you're in a level between a minimum of zero to twenty-five percent, and you meet expectations, you have an opportunity, if it's set at four percent, to get two to four percent raise. If you're at the midpoint, it's one point three. And if you're up there close to max, it's zero to two percent. So, and one of the things I wanted to talk about from an evaluation standpoint, and this is one that we always somewhat struggle with in evaluations, is doing more of a, you know, it's, it's more subjective. You know, hey, I like you. You know, we go out and party together and do everything else. So then all of a sudden, you know, you see all these nice five checks that's superior and everything else. But these are going to be based on objective. And what I'm working with, at least I'm working with the planning, public works, street, we are basically going through a strategic plan right now with them. And we're going to be setting some very specific goals that they will be evaluated against. So, you know, one of the goals is, is our water loss has to be less than fifteen percent. Well, did we do it? There's ways you can do that, but that's, that's what they're going to be measured on, very true, specific thing. So, anyway, does anybody have any questions on that?
I, I do. Were the questions in there? I'm sorry.
No.
Oh.
Not yet.
So back in twenty-one?
Yep.
We had a matrix that I wasn't crazy about, that, that created a way that people got raises based on tenure and tenure only. Would this replace that?
Yes.
Does this go, okay.
Yes. Because what is included in here is what we're recommending from a longevity standpoint, is what you're talking about.
Right.
It's ten dollars a month per year. So if you work here at the end of the year, if you work here, you know, your first year, you get a hundred and twenty dollars. So two years, two forty, three sixty, and you go up. That's a fair way to do it.
So that's part A?
Yep.
And this performance matrix, merit-based performance matrix is part B?
Okay.
I like, I like that very much. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. It takes the, it takes the subjective, is what you're trying to say.
Right.
You know, I like you, you do favors for me, you know, this kind of stuff. So I'm going to move you up to this. This is very much objective, is what we really want to have. If you want a good workforce, this is what you need. And you don't feel like people are favoritism to them.
Good. And people can work diligently to create a higher increase?
That's correct. Yeah. Unless they're way up here over on the maximum side, then the likelihood is that they're pretty well maxed out. Now, what happens, and I'm not going to go too much detail, but there is a lot of information in here on, let's say, for instance, if you want to create a new position, then this is the way, you know, how you do it. You go through the questionnaire, you figure out what the job, and you could put that actually into the grade structure specifically.
And, and we have roughly, well, full-time employees, fifty?
I don't know how many we have. Pat? Fifty? Yeah.
And of those fifty, are they evenly distributed across this? I would imagine not. Probably have.
No, no. I would say that, I'm not sure, and I haven't seen where even mine is or, you know, any of the other directors, so I don't know. I mean, that's pretty much out of my bellywag here. But, yeah, I would say most of them are, you know, seven and eight are where your foreman positions are. And then below that would be most of your operating stuff. Now, I know that Corey took, and we did a nice job, he did a nice job on his. He's got his all laid out. I believe Ryan has two. So, you know, I, I think everybody likes what they see. And I think it's going to be something you can manage for a long time. Yeah. I mean, it's.
Now, I just told you I like it, but I will tell you the one part I'm not crazy about.
Okay.
I, I don't think that it necessarily matters if somebody has a college degree or not. Think less and less people are going to college. And frankly, there are several people that I'd rather come work for us at the age of eighteen or nineteen versus going off to school. So that's one of those things that I don't know how necessary that is. Is that something that you're stuck on?
Well, I'm not stuck on it. I mean, it basically.
I just don't want to punish anybody.
It's part of the questionnaire.
Okay.
Part of the questionnaire.
But does it, does it punish people who don't have a college degree? It's just, it's part of the point.
I mean, you know, if the job description requires you to have a bachelor's degree.
And you don't.
And you don't, you still can be hired.
Okay, right. I understand that. And it still becomes part of the point system. And again, I mean, I'm not opposed to people getting college degrees. I'm just saying that, I mean, Steve Jobs didn't get a college degree. Bill Gates didn't get a college degree.
Sure, I understand. And things are changing. I mean, most, most, you know, kids are starting to look at other opportunities than maybe hopping to college right away.
Right.
Right.
And I'd like them to consider us.
Yeah. Starting their own business, doing some things and.
Or working for the city of Tonnytown.
Yeah. Right. Right. Correct.
What I was going to say is Chief Jensen and Chief Krug's is different because they have a different process that they have to go through for theirs. So I don't know if you want to speak to it, Chief Jensen, but his is completely different and.
He's always different. He always wants to, he doesn't want to follow rules anymore, you know.
Let me try to understand what you're saying.
And I was just going to let him explain about the seven years and the full, the twenty-eight years.
Yes, ours is modeled from this. What we did was tweaked it to be, staying competitive with other agencies our size. Our retirement system is different than what the city is. So what we built off of is, is to incorporate a twenty-eight-year career at Tonnytown. So with this model, each year, the step increase is a three percent. And then its longevity years for us are seven, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-five. On those years, based off your data hire, when you complete seven years, it's an additional five percent on that seventh year. So it'll be an eight percent increase that year. The following year, year eight, is back to a three, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-five. Twenty-five comes in if you're doing a full twenty-eight-year career. Our retirement system is based, at the end, it's the final average pay on your last three years. So that increase at the twenty-five-year mark is, allow you to retire out at twenty-eight years based on your final average, the highest final average pay years, instead of having to work for. fi, final average, the highest final average pay years, instead of having to work for another three years if you got another raise. Is it basically the idea on that? As far as modeling off of this, a lot of things are the same. We still do evaluations. We're tweaking our evaluations. We're doing two a year, and a lot of that is to go through and staying objective on it. You know, one of the other things that people run into is if, if an employee does something really bad at the beginning of the year, and then great through the rest of it, do you remember that at the end of the year when you're evaluating them? Or if they do something bad at the end of the year, is that the, the only thing that's left in your mind? And they score low because that's what was fresh. So that'll be a combined score of both evaluations at the end of the year for hours. And the other changes in ours will be with promotionals, if you promote up, or incentivizing the officers on that. So they're going to have a minimum standard that they can meet to apply for a promotion. However, if they exceed the minimum standards with some guidelines, if they attend certain trainings, so forth that's set in there, then the raise increase is selected for that promotional spot would be higher. If we have an officer that has certified in the state, has experience in another agency, we'll cap that at a three-year mark. So we can still stay somewhat competitive hiring them in, instead of at a base, brand-new officer at year one, step one, we can bring them in at a step three.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions?
Just one about your, the, the numbers. You said three, basically 3% annual bump until the, was it the seventh year? And you did an extra five, so it's an extra five every seven? And then they'd be back to a three on eight, and then on and on and on? And then in addition to those, there are the merit increases.
So currently, we don't have any merit increase, then none of that is built into ours. This, this model, every year, with the exception of year seven, 14, 21, and 25, every year is a 3%. On the seven, 14, 21, and 25, it's an additional five.
So how do we separate our excellent officers from, from the guys that maybe aren't? I'm not saying that we don't have any that aren't, but there might someday be somebody who isn't.
That's where I'm a little different, because when we're evaluating, if you're not performing to the standard that we want, just being blunt, I can hire somebody else that can do the minimum standard as well. So why keep that employed? If, if you want to exceed, the incentives, what we will look to do later will be similar to what our certificate pay is. So we're looking for, and we're still working on this, but it'll be specialty pays. For example, if you're bilingual, or canine, or anything else, it's a drone team, anything that has asked extra of you, we're still working on that, but that'll come later on, introduce that to you for approval. But as far as the promotional win, there is a position that's open if you meet. The incentivized area there is that if you want to promote, there's a minimum standard that you can meet. If you meet that and you get promoted to that position, your pay increase, if you're at an officer and you go up to a corporal rank, the pay increase with the minimum standard is just below 3%. It's not a full three for the promoted position. However, if you complete supervisor trainings, so many set in a year have X amount of training hours, if you are a field training officer, if you've completed instructor development classes that we have to have to teach other law enforcement, if you meet those standards and you're selected for that promoted position, then that pay increase could be 5%. So that's where we're putting in, the, the officer has to seek out these trainings. If they want to promote, and you want to just meet the minimum standard, you're not going to be rewarded the same as if you go out and you attend the trainings and the classes and, and get what you need to have for it.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody else?
All right. I do have another question for Mark. Is there a way to, to bump up your point level over time? I mean, you said basically first grade through 12th grade. Do those grade levels go up over tenure?
Bump up? They will move on a cost of living adjustment. So each year, those grades will shift. So if the cost of living is 2.5% this year, then, you know, next year, we'll adjust that base, whatever the base rate is, 2.5% to move up.
But I'm not talking about a, a percentage increase. I'm talking about, you, you have a listing of grade one.
Through 12.
To grade 12. If somebody starts in grade one, how do they get to grade two? If somebody starts in grade five, how do they get to grade eight?
Well, what they do is, is that they basically, you know, if they want to move up, then they move up by, you know, looking at the job that they want to take.
So they can only do that by promoting?
Right.
Okay. So, I, I'm sorry to be hung up on this college thing. I'm a huge micro fan, right?
Right.
Dirty jobs and all that stuff. Not, not that some of these, I mean, some of these jobs are dirtier than others, right?
Yeah.
What I, what I wouldn't want to do is say, okay, well, you're supposed to have a college degree for that particular thing, and you don't. We're going to hire you anyway, but then you're at a lower level.
You wouldn't be at that. You would be at whatever that job description, whatever job you're coming in.
So there's no penalty?
No.
Okay. You get the job, you get the job, you're competing against everybody else who's trying to get the job?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
The, the good thing about it is, is that especially, you know, let's just say in public works, and it's even at streets, there's four, there's operator one, there's an operator two, there's an operator three, and there's an operator four. Those operators really have to do with what kind of skill level they have, you know, water license, one. Number two is, is that if they require a CDL, operator one doesn't, you know, and then, you know, you have your certifications, and then you also have, what kind of equipment can you run? You know, can you just run, you know, a, a small piece of equipment? That's an operator one. Are you going to be Rob, do a mini-X, or you're going to do a backhoe, or are you going to use a grader? You know, those type of things will move you up. So your skills that you're talking about would move you up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
No matter if you're coming in with a high school degree. Because you can earn your certificates, just like one of our guys, who's the foreman, Mark, I mean, he's getting ready to move up to class three, two. Class two, water license, he's been in one. So, you know, I mean, that's what you do. You're going to get paid more money. Yes, Mike?
Yes, so are these the grades that we're using and the salaries?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Does the job analysis questionnaire, do they fill it out online? Is it scored for them as they fill it out?
No, I, I took the job descriptions, and I have a point system that I used to create that.
Based on their application that they complete? So they, they don't really know what they're scoring as they're.
They will know, as soon as we get all the job description, or not job description, but evaluations done, they'll know what their actual pay is, what grade they're in.
Okay.
And where they're at within that grade, whether they're in the minimum or they're in the midpoint.
Okay. I had a couple of other questions about this. I forget what we called it. Salary administration plan overview. I don't know if we were going to discuss that any further, we're just talking about numbers right now. But if you're going to, well, I, in here, there's mention of a human resources person. Obviously, I don't think we have someone titled human resources. We do?
Well, Luanne serves as the HR.
Okay.
She does some of the administration, yes.
So, I mean, are we, and I don't know, she may have a degree in HR, I don't know, or is that the kind of person we're seeking for, human resources director? Do we need?
You, you don't need a full-time resource director, no. No. I mean, we only have 50 employees.
Just to answer your question, she has done human resources in previous jobs, so she does have a big experience in that.
It's kind of combined together.
I was kind of wondering when I saw this reference to human resources and over, and showed my ignorance about that. And then the personnel action form that's in here, what exactly is that?
That's basically how, you know, it's actually given to boss over there with the money. No, it's basically just outlines, okay, you know, your, your name, your position, and what grade you're in, what your pay is. It's just placed into their personnel file as a record of what their job is and what their pay is.
Okay.
Including a copy of their job description.
That's not the evaluation, then?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. I think that's all I've got. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like it, I'd like to have it moved to the council so we can make it as a policy.
I think it's been very well done. I make a motion that we move this to council.
Second. I would also like to thank you, Mark, for your, your, I feel like you've started this and kindled this and refined this, and I, I thank the council for all y'all's questions and, you know.
It's something that's going to be a living document.
And I totally believe, you know, like you said, it's going to help us incentivize and, and employee retention, you know, really. Because that is, that's a hard thing to do when you're running a company.
I believe Mike has a question for you before you sit down. Not a question, I just wanted to make sure what we're moving forward is the, the guide along with the attachments that were supposed to be included in it, meaning the, you just, you just want the grades, the matrix, and?
The sort of license pay.
The license pay schedule, not the job questionnaire form that was.
No.
Okay, so just the three-page attachment.
I just wanted to put that in there so you guys knew what we were working on.
All right, I'm good with that. Thank you. Okay, we've had.
Got a motion in a second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
All right, next we have a presentation of the simple grant program.
This is, this is not, this is not going to take a long time, okay, guys? Promise you. Well, you know, I promised that I would bring this to you, so I'm bringing it to you. And we hired, we hired simple grants as, as a recommendation to you all to, to help us along, since I used them when I was in Illinois quite a bit. Executive summary basically is a comprehensive grant strategy that identifies not only public but private grant opportunities, and it also establishes a timeline for submission of those grants over the next 12 months. So the priorities that we gave them were water, wastewater, and stormwater, police department, fire department, sidewalks and trails, and then the community center and senior center. Those were the priorities we gave them. The second thing is, is you could see on that next page, I mean, they identified, golly, I don't know how many grants in here, you know, that they had identified that could be used for some of those priorities. And then they did what they call a SOAR analysis, which is basically almost like a strategic plan. But the key factors that they were looking at was, as we know, we're growing very fast. Two is, is that we want to get the response for our community in a quick manner, in utilizing what we can with, especially the federal grants where most of the money is at. And, you know, besides the infrastructure, we talked about emergency response, equipment, personnel, and then also the quality life enhancements that, that we sorely need in this community. Our goal is 20% of our total capital outlay has to come from grants. That's a big goal, I'm just telling you. But I'm here to tell you that I'll do whatever I can to make sure we meet that goal. One of the big challenges is like in some of the grants is, is because the Tonton is more of an affluent population with only 3% residents below poverty level. It puts us in some, some challenges when we look at, especially federal grants, from that aspect. So they took this analysis, they basically looked at some, you know, our strengths, opportunities, some results, and then identified, as you go into this, which is all the grants that they had presented to us, I think you guys have a copy of it. On the first page is, you've got, is it fit to the client? So it's one, one to five. So if, a five's the highest, and if you get a five, that means you've got a good opportunity to be able to achieve that grant. Most of the ones that we have selected or were, were in the process of are in the five category. And what they've done is, is they will actually call us. He called me, we have a meeting once a month, the mayor's in that meeting, James has been in the meeting, Corey, and along with Ryan. Is Ryan off the boat yet? Man, I tell you, that guy, how much vacation? Did he negotiate something like 10 weeks of vacation or something? Oh, okay. Just kidding you, Ryan, if you're listening. Okay, these are, these are the grants that we have identified that we would like to go after now. Some of the ones that you see at the beginning were third quarter this year, some over fourth quarter. We are in the process, that's why I was asking where Ryan was. But anyway, we are in the process because it has to be submitted by December 20th, I believe. Is the assistant fire, fire grants, firefighter grants, that's a federal emergency, that's FEMA. It's up to $1 million. So when you see this, is there a match? Is there funding? How much is going? Is it competitive? Priorities, fire department, description of what you can actually get with this grant and what people are eligible for, and the awards, and how many were awarded last year, which were 2,000. So this is actually going faster than the appropriation were made. And so we're in the process with Ryan and simple grants to apply for a fire truck. Okay? So as soon as he gets me the information, then we will apply for the fire truck, if he gets off vacation by the 20th. If not, we won't apply.
Gets off the boat?
That, pardon?
The second grant that we've, are in the process of doing, and it has to be submitted, I believe, by January 13th, it's on the deadline. If you look at it, it's called the RAISE Grant, National Infrastructure Investment, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainable and Equitable. This is the U.S. Department of Transportation. I have visited with Congressman Womack about this. We, he will be sending a support letter along with a couple of senators. So what you see is, is that you've got a deadline, the funding is 1 million to 25 million, and there's a match. Now, there's a catch to that match, which is kind of interesting, but I'll share that with you. We have applied, we're in the application process, and we are using simple grants, and the reason we're using them is because these federal grants are very complicated. You have to get on a website, and there's all kinds of pages and all kinds of stuff. And so we present to them what we, our project is. And, you know, we, we looked at several things, but what this project basically is doing is, is taking South Bandini from where we're stopping on our 412 Barrington traffic light signal project, which stops at Bandini. So this project would pick Bandini up and go all the way to south to Teldoloo. And I've got, we had to have Zach do a little design work along with getting us a cost estimate that we needed. And so if you want to see the design, it's beautiful, and you will like what you see. And, but it is a three-lane curbed gutter, has a trail on one side, has, it's a complete street, what they call a complete street, very similar to what you're building on Fletcher, with trees. But what we're adding is, is some really cool lighting. We need to start looking at our lighting that we're going to do in critical areas. The, the reason we selected this area was. The, the reason we selected this area was is really the school. Yeah, you know, we probably get more complaints and I know we've tried to backdoor things. But, you know, having people drive around and, you know, get on 112 to be able to access the school and it gets backed up. So, you know, once Fletcher gets open, that's going to be a nightmare. And so this actually builds a three-lane road through that area from Taldo Loop, which is where the majority of the subdivisions stop. Okay? Major, I mean, density-wise. And then you'll pick up and head into town and we'll make it look really, really nice. So we are applying for that grant. Now, talking about, we were talking about the match. And I asked him about it because it was 20% match. He indicated that if you are a rural community, it's 100% paid. He drew up a map and showed what was interesting, and James and I were too. It shows that a portion of from Bandini to, what is that, Westbrook subdivision, I think is now what they call urban. And that's the only place that's urban. The rest of it's all rural, all the way down to Taldo Loop. So he was going to ask, he was going to call and ask him and see what he is. But he thought that we ought to be 100% funded on that. And that would be massive. That would be absolutely massive. So we're working on that grant. Those are the two that we're working on. The other one Cory has brought up is there's a cops hiring program. And he would like to submit that for three additional officers. And the good thing about this stuff is you, you get the money. And then after, I think it's three years or five years, then you actually have to pay the whole, I mean, the full salary of it. So you kind of step into it. It's kind of like the firefighter grant. So we'll look at when they call and forecast that one's to be in sometime in May. So we'll, we'll actually be bringing something to you on that. And then I talked with Ryan about the assistance of firefighters. As you know, he's, he's trying to add firefighters to his, his crew. He would like to wait on that until we know a little bit more about what's going to happen out on 612, 412 and possibly building another station out there. And that's when his needs would really be more than what he has today. So those are the grants that we are honing on. We did, we did talk to them a little bit more. The problem with water and wastewater is, is there's not a lot of grants out there. So what we're going to try to do is when we, if we get the grant, the raise grant, we'll include an upgrade to the water line that's actually on the capital improvements plan to extend down to Taldo Loop. So that's, that's just included in that. So we're going to kind of do that in putting that together. But they're still looking for some possible grants that we might be able to use with regards to that. There are other grants that are going to be coming up. They actually call us and say, hey, by the way, here's a grant. Do you want to apply for it? When they start coming in. So anybody have any questions or anything? I mean, that's kind of our grant strategy and what we're trying to look for and what we're going to apply for. And most of all, most of the grants that are in the state, I would say most state grants along with, you know, regional type, we can handle that. It's like the TAP grant, we just talked about those sidewalks. I mean, we put that one together, the one that we did over there with Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. We do those. Those are pretty simple to do. And when you get to the federal level, it's a whole different game. So we would like to utilize Simple Grants when we get to the federal level. Because there's a lot more money there. Questions, audit?
Well, a comment. I love the idea. In the years that I've been here, it's something that we talk about a lot. We've tried to make happen with various levels of success. It's a difficult thing to do. And so you've brought not just the thought, which seems obvious, of course, we should be going for grants. But putting it together in a way that works, that shows us a, a plan and a method. And I couldn't thank you more.
Well, you know, we just don't, we don't have quite all the resources a lot of the communities have. So this is one resource that we need to tap in to help support it.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I appreciate you.
We don't have to move this anywhere. This is just a.
I just appreciate you explaining what the fit to client meant because I didn't understand that. I looked through a lot of these yesterday and I didn't, I didn't understand what fit to client meant. But appreciate you.
Next, we have a discussion of a resolution to amend the 2024 budget to appropriate funds for a one-time end-of-year bonus. And that would be our illustrious mayor.
All right. I just wanted to, well, yeah, I guess you already read it. Discuss the resolution to amend the budget to appropriate funds for the one-time year, end-of-year bonus for our employees. This would include our full-time employees that have been employed with the city for at least one year. The full-time employees under one year would be prorated. And I was just asking for, it would be $1,000 minus, of course, of all of the fees that they have, that has to be taken out. Mr. Penalto? Would you like to explain that? He loves it whenever I call his name. He's, I'm telling you, he is. We were talking about the $1,000 and, and the funds that have to be taken out and so forth. Could you explain that? What would, would they end up being? It wouldn't be the full $1,000 that they would receive.
Yeah, but basically what we're looking at is full-time employees. And so basically, as long as you've been employed one year or longer, it would be the full amount. But if you were hired within this year, it's prorated by however many months you have been employed this year. So I think there's like seven or eight new hires this year that will be less than 1,000.
Any questions?
Pat and I talked at length earlier this week.
Oh, okay. Any questions, anyone?
Daniel?
Yes.
Mike?
Now you just need a motion to move this to special? Make a motion to move this to our special.
We need to just pass this and then we can.
Maybe it's a special meeting.
Yeah.
I need a second.
So we need a motion.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
So Daniel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now discussions.
Any citizens?
Citizens? Zero? Counsel?
Now, you, you know what I'm going to say.
I do, absolutely, though.
Uh, but you're wrong. What? Okay, so here's my argument. My argument has been, why give bonuses when we can give raises, right? And I don't, I don't necessarily want us to be playing Santa Claus at the end of the year with extra money. However, Pat and I talked earlier this week. Here's what I learned. Roughly 50 employees, it's going to cost us about $50,000 to do it. And the, the, the employees, who I love, by the way, and I want them to get more money. I love this performance-based matrix. I love what you guys were telling me about how we do pay raises going forward. So thank you for all the work on that. But we came in under budget by three-quarters of a million dollars. About 575 and then maybe a little more by the end of the, by the end of the year. So when we are saving the taxpayers $750,000, I, I guess I don't mind as much squeezing out another 50 in that direction. Now, if the taxpayers are cool with that, awesome. If they're not, we need to hear it. But we are employing people to work for the citizens of Tiny Town, just like anywhere else. We want good employees that do good work. And if giving them a bonus at the end of the year helps to facilitate that, I'm all for it. Surprised?
I am totally shocked and awed, but.
Well said, Tim.
So now, any other comment? Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Needs to the special meeting.
All right. Let's see now. Next, we have a discussion of prayer before meetings. Mr. Burris, that would be you.
Thank you, Chairman. Really quick, since our country's founding, countless state and local governments have begun their meetings with prayer. They begin the meeting with the pledge. They begin the meeting with prayer. And that includes, by the way, the U.S. Senate, the U.S. House of Representatives, the Arkansas State Senate, the Arkansas House of Representatives as part of their parliamentary rules. And I would like to add that to our parliamentary rules, which we're going to be discussing in January. And I'm simply asking that you support me. I think it's a great way to honor Father Bandini, who is the whole reason why we're here. And, and I just appreciate your support. That is all.
Citizen comment? Counsel?
Actually, I was, I do want to say something about the parliamentary rules that we were discussing. We, Mark, Mark Latham and Tim Conklin has already been putting together, putting together a meeting for us to be able to do that. And it'll be sometime in January. Is that correct, Mark? Yeah. So we, yes, that's already been in the works. He's already spoken with Tim Conklin. So I wanted to let you know that that will be coming up. Probably around the time that I told you we would be doing.
It usually doesn't, January every two years. Every time we swear in, is that what you?
Yes.
Okay.
So question.
Yep.
As far as the prayer, would that be before the anthem, before the meeting officially starts? How's that work?
Uh, we can talk about that and, and do it how you, how you want. I've got here, this is the parliamentary rules for the Senate and, and for the House. The House does, I think, prayer pledge or pledge prayer. It's chaplain-led, basically. And that, that's how they do it. We can do it however we want.
I, I did, it, it.
Go ahead.
I did look up the guidelines on that. And some of, and I believe in prayer. I think you, you know that. The, and I did look up the guidelines. The prayer should be directed at lawmakers and not the public. The prayer should be inclusive and avoiding names of specific deities or religions. The prayer should be delivered by a community member, not government officials. And the prayer should not be given by the same faith every month.
I, I don't know how we do that here. But the Supreme Court back in 2014.
Yes, that's where I got that at.
Okay. So what I saw from the Supreme Court ruling was that chaplain-led is fine. That they can say Lord, they can say Jesus, they can say God, they can say Christ, they can say all those things. So there's nothing against that.
Correct.
And that it is Christian-based. And yes, that the whole idea behind it is that it sort of centers the body here to be a little more somber, a little more thoughtful. And, and, you know, preferably guided by God in, as we make those decisions.
I don't know the answer to this question. I'm, I really do not have any idea.
Yeah.
If somebody comes and says, and I, I know nothing about other faiths other than what I know, okay?
Yeah.
So, but if somebody that is, and I know nothing, Muslim faith or a Jew or something comes and said, we want to do a prayer. Is there, is there something that, that prevents that or what?
I can, I can share all that with you with, with my research. I, I didn't think we needed to get into all that. We can if you want to.
No, no, no. We can talk about it later.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have no idea.
Yeah, absolutely. There, there are certain things that you can do, certain things you can't do, certain things that you want to do, certain things you don't want to do. But it absolutely works. There have been times when people have challenged that. And that's why it ends up in places like the Supreme Court. And Supreme Court has said it's absolutely constitutional to do so. You can say God, Jesus, Christ, all those sorts of things, Lord, all those things. But again, as the mayor pointed out, it's directed to us. There's nothing necessarily wrong with praying a blessing over the community either. But the way that most people do it is they have sort of an honorary chaplain of the month. And so somebody who works in the city or the mayor herself or one of us could go through a list of local churches and say, hey, would you be willing to be the chaplain of the month? And lead us in a, in a corporate prayer.
And I do want to point out that anyone that does, any, any religion whatsoever, if they do want to come and say a prayer or anything like that, they cannot be denied.
Uh, I, I think the.
According to the Supreme Court.
I think, I think what the Supreme Court said was that it is Christian-led. So there would be like some that, I mean, like a Muslim faith perhaps. But there are probably others that, that aren't.
Where?
I'm, I'm not saying any of it. I'm telling you what the Supreme Court has said. Totally understand. And if you guys want, we can talk more about it. I, I thought this was a, sure, of course we pray. Uh, if you guys want to talk more about that, I have no problem at all as we talk about parliamentary hearings in January.
Well, I, I agree. I, I'm the same way. As a matter of fact, almost before every meeting, I've had someone come in my office and say a prayer for me.
Great.
And, but I also do not want to get our city in any kind of trouble.
I, I can, I can bring, I can share it with y'all if you want to see it before the next meeting, why legally we can, we can absolutely do it.
I think Mr. Wash Koyak has.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you have a written summary of what you've compiled, I think that would be beneficial for all of us to look at. And particularly if you've got the Supreme Court case. So I can look at it too. What, what is the case that we're referring to? I'm not familiar with the name of the case.
Oh, there, there are several. It has to be clergy-led.
Well, no, no, I just, I need the name of the case.
I'm sorry, what?
The name of the case, the, the style, the caption.
Brown or whatever.
Oh, um, I'd have to look it up for you again, but.
Okay.
Uh, it was out of a, I think the last one in 2014 was a municipality in North Carolina.
Well, if that's the last one, I assume that's the one that has.
That's what it is.
The most, yeah. Okay.
And that's, I mean, that's 10 years ago. So there, the, again, the state of Arkansas does it in the House. They do it in the Senate. They do it before every single meeting. The U.S. Senate, the U.S. House does it. They do it before every single meeting. So it's clergy-led. There are Jews that are clergy. There are all sorts of different clergy, but clergy-led. And then we do, I think the town was Grease. I think it's Grease versus, I think it's Grease versus Galloway, Mike.
I believe it is.
I'm sorry, was that right?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
I believe it.
Well, if there's anything more you have to add to Larry's question that you can add tonight so that we all are, you know, I, I like full transparency and we're here now. I mean, if you've got more to divulge on that, I'd rather hear that now.
On which part?
Larry's comment that he had brought up to.
All right, let me read you what I got. The most recent Supreme Court case involving the issue of legislative prayers, the town of Grease, New York versus Galloway, decided in May 2014. In that case, the Supreme Court framed the issue as follows, quote, "Whether the town imposed an impermissible establishment of a religion by opening its monthly board meetings with a prayer," end quote. The town had reinstituted its prayer practice in 1999. The practice consisted of the town supervisor inviting a local clergyman to the front of the room to deliver an invocation. After the prayer, the town supervisor would thank the ministers, or minister rather, for serving as the board's chaplain for the month and present him with a commemorative plaque. The prayer was intended to place town board members in a solemn and deliberative frame of mind, invoke divine guidance in town affairs and follow a tradition practiced by Congress and dozens of state legislatures. Let me pick this back up. Hang on just a second. I ran out of room. Got it here. Town leaders maintain that a minister or layperson of any persuasion, including an atheist, could give the invocation. But nearly all the congregations in town were Christian. And from 1999 to 2007, the participating ministers were too. This resulted in invocations that generally asked the divinity to abide at the meeting and bestow blessings on the community. The words Lord, Jesus and God were frequently used in prayers. Some of the prayers mentioned religious holidays such as Easter and expressly referenced the Christian faith. A lawsuit filed by two persons offended by the Christian themes of the clergy-led prayers. Eventually, the case was decided by the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court concluded that the town's prayer practice did not violate the First Amendment. At the very outset of the decision, the court rejected the contention that a prayer. a prayer's content determined its constitutionality. If it were otherwise, courts would be converted into, quote, "supervisors and censors of religious speech," a clearly unacceptable result. Although the court upheld the tradition of legislative prayer to open legislative meetings, it did not, I'm sorry, it did impose certain constraints. The court ruled that legislative prayer must be solemn and respectful in tone, must invite lawmakers to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends, must not belittle nonbelievers or religious minorities, must not preach conversion, and must not apply pressure, direct or indirect, on those in attendance to participate. Finally, the court ruled that the prayer should include an express statement that those attending the legislative sessions are not required to stay during its delivery or participate in any way. And some legislators must ensure that clergy-led prayers are inclusive, suited to the legislative setting, and geared toward the ends of the legislative process. Then there were others. Three years later, Lund v. Rowan, North Carolina, the United States Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit decided a case involving lawmaker-led prayer. And in lawmaker-led prayer, that one they found was unconstitutional. So there's a difference between it being led by one of us and by it being led by a clergy member. Does that help?
So it sounds like we would just need to make sure that whoever came had all of these rules to understand their, what their parameters are.
Sure.
Clergy or even just a citizen?
Uh, well, I, I, I think to stay out of hot water, clergy-led is the way to go. There are lots of churches in town. We ask them. To Misty's point, I think there are probably times in other places where somebody kind of goes off in an area or not, but the benefit of not having a specific chaplain all the time helps to offset some of that concern.
I mean, I just think it'd be important that they always know the guidelines.
For sure. Sure. And, and that'd be easy enough to share with, with them. And then, I mean, we could even do what that town did and give them a little plaque or something that thanks them, but we don't have to.
That means we'd be spending money, Tim.
Well, paper doesn't cost as much as you might imagine, and we do print a lot of it here, but we could probably find a way to do that. I, I might even be willing to come out of my personal budget, maybe.
I'm just kidding.
I'm just saying, I could. Yeah, I said I could. Anyway, so I didn't mean to start a row in any, in any possible way. I just think it's an important construct. We see it all over the country, including at the highest levels of government, both on a federal level and a state level.
Questions, comments, concerns?
The only question that comes to me is, you know, who would we put in charge of, you know, reaching out to clergy and, and, you know, making a schedule for?
Jamie Malone.
Yeah. You know, reaching out.
Ron just said Tim could do it. Tim, Tim would be happy to do it.
Tim?
Would it be in front of, you know, every meeting, city, city council, planning?
Uh, that's all based on the rules of the, of the, the body. So we're talking about the rules of our body and how we do things.
Or city council or both?
Uh, again, it's, it's how we do it. It's whatever we decide in January. I think it should be in front of any, anything that we do.
Mm-hmm.
For a Christian nation, I think it matters.
Yeah.
I, I, I do think it's very important as well. I think that there is a place for it as well, and I don't want to get ourselves in hot water, because we cannot deny, as you, as you read, an atheist can come and give a prayer.
You think there's a lot of atheist clergy around? Because I don't.
No, I do not. And that would be a hot water and that would get us in legal trouble.
Well, it, that's fine. Then, then we don't deny them, but the Supreme Court is on our side. So I, it's fine. I hear you. But I would, what's that? We can put that in the parliamentary rules.
So this will become, this will come before us in January.
Anything over three minutes is probably not necessary.
Tonight or in January?
January. In January.
Oh. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
She asked if I was going to put it on there and I, I said no.
And to your point, Mayor, I don't think we're going to get ourselves in hot water. The state hasn't gotten themselves in hot water. We're not going to get in hot water. The, the U.S. Senate hasn't.
Okay.
You're, okay?
So.
Oh, yeah.
Are we going to, are we going to go ahead with this or just let Tim proceed and see if we can come up?
Are we going to give legal advice?
Again, it's, yeah, this isn't, this isn't an ordinance issue, well, legal advice. We don't have to get because we got it on the state level.
Well, we want to know what the legal, yeah, I would.
Okay, well, sure. We can ask Justin, but we, we know what the rules are.
Yeah, okay.
And, and again, we're not trying to codify something. It's just part of our parliamentary rules in January. But Supreme Court says clergy, so I think it's important we stick with clergy.
Next, we have comments from our council members. Mike?
I'll pass. Thanks for everybody coming out. It's been a long meeting.
Danny?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Mr. Lovett, thank you for coming up during your citizen comment and commenting in front of the body. Um, I want to thank citizens in general. Uh, thank you for your participation over the year. You know, we're coming to the end of the year. Counsel, I want to thank everybody up here. Tonight was a great, you know, I'll probably go back and watch this tape and I usually do, uh, once or twice. And, uh, tonight was a great discussion on multiple, uh, things that are brought in front of us. I want to thank Water Works and the program that they've brought in front of us. I think that that's been a really good eye-opener to, uh, you know, a projection process for us. And if we can implement that, I think that'd be great. I mean, thanks, Mr. Latham, for all your work on the salary guide and the simple grants presentations. Those are very informative. Uh, and thank you, Tim, for bringing up the prayer before meetings and the parliamentary things that we'll be discussing in January.
Misty?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Um, a couple of community things coming up for December. Um, a week from Saturday, we've got Shop With A Cop, so you have until then to donate for that. We had a great success with it last year and I'm excited to see what they're going to be able to do this year. And then also a week from Saturday, we have our holiday farmer's market vendors are going to have booths here inside chambers from nine to two. Um, I hope you'll come and support local. Um, I'm excited to be here with them, to see them bring back their goodies that I'm severely missing since the market closed. So, but they're very excited and hope that this is a first of many years of this holiday market. So thank you for coming out and, uh, thank you for a great year.
Tim?
Good night. I'll see you at the special meeting.
All I've got is, uh, thanks, our staff just repeatedly goes above and beyond, as do our police and fire, by the way. And thanks to our citizens over here, keep us, keep us informed and on our toes, hopefully best I can anyway. So I want to thank everybody. Mayor?
Okay, well, I'm going to kind of end with a very sad story that's hard to talk about. Uh, Monday, when I came to work, I had a phone call on my mayor phone, and I didn't take it because it said it was from Neosho, Missouri, and I'm thinking spam. It's a good thing I listened to the voice message. It was a lady that lives, or lived on Harmon Road. Her and her son have lived there for 24 years. She's actually moved to Neosho, Missouri. Her son still lives there in the same house with his grandparents, 24 years old, and he was diagnosed with renal failure, with kidney failure. He had, the list is just so long and the words are so long, I can't list everything that has happened to him. What I was told, she, she was supposed to be here tonight to speak. She's hoping to be here on the 17th to speak. He has to have a kidney transplant hopefully in March, and then, and then something like chemotherapy will, will start to suppress it. Also, what they were told is that the disease that he has is like multi, multiple melanoma and is treated like cancer, but it is not cancer. This text that I'm reading is from her. She texted me tonight because she wasn't going to be able to be here. All this can be caused, and this is from the doctor, all this can be caused by environmental triggers in the mutating genes. Two of the chemicals that were at the highest levels from our air testing is what their doctors have said could have caused the triggering or the actual disease. Like I said, she's going to be coming to the next meeting, hopefully if they can get here. I've got a, a screenshot of a GoFundMe account that shows his picture, but he's lived on Harmon Road for 24 years. And, um, just want you guys to pray about their, for their family and remember all of the things that they're going through. And hopefully no one else in our community will go through something like this because of the pollutants in the air that's being caused or being out there. So with that, I will end. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight and thank you for listening.
All right. Now I seek all in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Stay tuned for their special meeting. Right now.
Okay, I would like to call the, go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd like to call the special city council meeting, December 5th, 2024, to order. Roll call, please. Daniel?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Misty?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Amber? All right, since we've already done the pledge, I seek approval for the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?